That was kind of the icing on the cake. You've heard, and as Prime Minister rolled out a number of the plans for the administration over the next two years. And we did say tonight we'd offer you the opportunity to ask some questions. And so we want to, we want to do that now. We'd ask you to limit your questions to the information heard tonight. As I said earlier, you would get a copy, physical hard copy, to take home with you to study as well. So we want to ensure the questions tonight are like popcorn. We don't want to keep you here very late. We understand some people have to go back to St. Patrick's tonight, as there are people here from all over the country. And therefore, we'd like to do it as quickly as possible. And so if you have your first question, please make it to three microphones. There's one on this side, one in the middle of the hall, and one to my left. I just couldn't say the Prime Minister wasn't a teacher. I thought he was very clear.
Good evening, Prime Minister. Good evening to the Ministers of Cabinet. I have a request, mostly than a question, based on the presentation I was made. And I will quickly ask, make my request. Prime Minister, based on your presentation and the number of construction projects listed to be done over the next 24 months, my beef for the private sector and our beef is that in recent times, we have noticed a development whereby local people, local entrepreneurs and businesses have been excluded from getting works on these projects in terms of materials and so on. You're not even given an opportunity to bid. My request is that could government somehow in these projects reserve through the tendering process somewhere where we can say local companies will be given priority, where they can supply materials that will match the specifications of the project? That is one. The second request is, and I want to make a plug here for Tam C C, as you know, I always do. I didn't notice any relief being done in the phases one and two of the educational project for Tam C C. My question is, is it part of the $27 million phase that is scheduled later on in the 24 months or in the other project that's been listed, especially when it comes to our mechanical building that was destroyed since Ivan and we haven't had a roof put back on that building and the students still have to run out when it rains? That are my two questions, Prime Minister, through you and through Cabinet Ministers.
Well, the first one was a suggestion, I think you said, and the second, a question. Given that it's Tam C C and it concerns the education process, I may want to ask the Minister of Education to come to answer that particular question. Minister?
Good evening, everyone. Yes, it is part of the plan for the second set of schools. I believe you heard the Prime Minister outline. The first set that's coming on immediately is the St. Joseph's Convent, the Granville Secondary, and the Mount Rose S D. The second group, it's outside of this phase, but it has not mentioned tonight perhaps because it's under the OPEC, an OFID fund, in which we have about eight institutions lined up. Amongst them is the roofing that you spoke of in the section for Tam C C. Bear in mind that it was previously accounted for, funded, and we lost the funding. And I think we discussed that at length when it happened some time back. But, and it takes a while therefore to turn around and explain how, why, where, and what. But it is scheduled for that group that's requested through the OPEC fund. I trust that answers what you need to know.
Thank you, Minister.
Good evening. I would just add, like to add one thing to the three statements that the Prime Minister made about Karani, the fourth being, "All is not lost without youth." And that that young man maybe should be a youth ambassador, maybe in the O E C S, as the O E C S director said it a message. To the Minister of Finance, I know there are a lot of people sitting at home, a lot of small business, business people, a lot of people in the middle class, a lot of self-employed people, who have not been doing very well. They're choking up to their necks, maybe with banks or creditors. What have we heard tonight that will allow them to have some hope in the immediate future, that at least business will get a little better, given that the majority of, what motivates this economy in Grenada is in fact retail? What hope would they have in the next six months or year that things are going to get better and that their banks would not foreclose, foreclose on a lot of people?
Thank you very much, and pleasant good evening to everyone. The hope that we provide to the persons that you referred to are contained in the speech itself. That is to say that these persons are looking for business activity as long as there are a number of projects of the type that are going on and people are employed and are earning incomes. They will use those incomes to purchase goods and services. The providers of those goods and services are the small businesses that you speak of. So whether we're talking about the shops in the communities or the smaller businesses elsewhere, we cannot provide direct economic benefits as such to the small businesses. What we have to do is provide income that people can use to spend in their businesses and their by generating. I just want to say, if you would allow me, please, in response to the question raised by, or the issue, the comment raised by Mr. De Ali, Senator De Ali, Honorable Senator De Ali, that we are in fact seeing Grenadian companies involved in the employment process in Grenada and in the bidding for contracts. Right now, the Granville Market Project involves local contractors. I don't think it is fair to say that these are all foreigners that are involved. And of course, especially where loans are coming from organizations like the C D B. They have a process. Non-borrowing member countries also have a right to bid, and we can't manipulate that process, as I think you well understand. So we are doing our best to ensure that Grenadian companies are involved, but of course, it's not simply a matter of deciding that Grenadian companies will get the bids or will win the bids.
Thank you, Minister. And let me just point out, it was just pointed out to me as well, that in the Prime Minister's remarks, he did say 40 million U.S. and I think he gave a 1.8 million E C. I think you'd understand that's a translation to 108 million dollars and not, not the figure that was used. I think it was an issue of a typo there. Any other questions?
Ladies, gentlemen, Honorable Prime Minister and Honorable Ministers. Now, this question is for Mr. Prang, as a lawyer, being a lawyer. Now, first to comment, in 17 years, 17 something, I have seen a documentation at the Lagoon Road, where it was a city and it sank. Now, Mr. Disavry has acquired it or leased it for 99 years or something. There was a very good project going on on that, that Lagoon Road. From the time this government has won, it means that I have overheard then in some way with some other big people at the time, it would not be going on again until, unless the N M P win. So I would like to know, I would like to know that if there's anything in the Constitution within a developer and a businessman, because what is the differentiation between the developer and the businessman? So how could this project could stop and workers, they used to be working, now the project is automatically done? Mr. Disavry probably said, "People have seen rumors that he has leased this place to someone else." So as a lawyer, I would lead to give me everybody, because the small person, they need to know, give a light on it, that what is the difference between the developers and the investors? I would like a light. And the next thing is to, I must congratulate my constituency representative, which is Glennis Roberts. She has gone to Cabinet and represented hundreds of workers that do security jobs and raise a pay for the security job. Now, for years, men have been working for four dollars an hour, leave their wives and kids at home, and spend 11 hours at work. Now, it's congratulations to her. And people are saying, "This is a political mileage." It isn't a political mileage. For years, people have been suffering under the same bosses that represents the town, security bosses then. And thanks a lot to you.
While I'm sure, we, we certainly like to, I'm not sure Lieutenant Prime wants to attempt an answer to that. But I don't know, I don't know that there's anything in the Constitution that says that that differentiates between developer and investor.
Thank you. Good evening. Well, I think Richard is absolutely right. That is probably one of the most difficult questions I've ever heard in my life. But I think the, the point that really seems to be coming across us to do with this issue of 99-year leases and so forth. We have been faced with that difficulty for some time, and I know for a fact that it's an issue that we are reviewing as to the length of the leases. Clearly, one knows the difficulties that are associated with developers on the one hand, scarce resources on the other, and of course, government policy in the middle. All of those need to be in the same channel. But for the dear caller, I would dare say to you that Mr. Disavry is a developer. He has his own obligations, government has their obligation. And of course, we try to find the best deal that we can. Not all the time we are going to be satisfied that the deal is pleasing to everybody. But leave the issue of the Lagoon, because I think right now, Captain Nicholson, by way of demonstration, we believe that this project is going well. And we want to commend the developers for doing a good job for us. I think we should take a page from that.
Thank you. Senator Prime. I'm surprised there's not lines at the microphones in there. Yes, we have, we have, no, we have, no, we have a line. We're gonna start the middle first, we're gonna go to my right next, then go back.
Yes, good night to Honorable Prime Minister and his Cabinet, and to beautiful folks here. My concern is that since after Hurricane Ivan, I have a passion for the environment, for agriculture, and I would like to see, I would like to hear a little more as it relates to replanting of trees in the country. And I'm much talked about land use policy. Because when I look at the Granite Town area and we listen to people making contribution after Ivan, the experience, we are saying that we have bounced back and we're looking better. But when I travel over the Granite Town, there's plenty of vine on dry trees. So it, the place is looking very green. I would like to see us or the government have a policy whereby we engage in planting trees vigorously and rigorously, because we have a lot of movements of the soil and we have a problem down the road if we don't try to fix it immediately. That's one. And two, in a, in a land use policy, I would like to see some law or something be put in place whereby persons will have to apply for cutting trees. Because when you cut huge trees, especially on sloping area, we find as citizens, we still have to put into our pockets to build great backwalls. So I would like to see something be done as soon as possible as it relates to that. And as a lover of sports, I love the announcement tonight to hear that the athletic stadium will be built sometime. And since that Kirani has made such a great contribution and raised our nose very high, I would like to be the first person inside here to say that in doing the stadium, we really consider naming it after Kirani.
Okay, your recommendation noted. Honorable Minister of Lands, too, respond to that land use? Senator Noel? Senator Lett, I'm sorry, Minister Lett, I'm sorry.
Thank you very much for this question, Mr. Belma. Hurricane Ivan devastated our forestry sector, and as a result, our water resources has lessened. We had a lot of slides taking place, because as you're aware, our trees keeps this, the roots of trees keeps the land intact. But at the moment, we are negotiating a loan, and very soon, I guess, things will be completed. We'll be doing a major resuscitation of our forestry sector. So very soon, you'll be seeing some traction on that. Thank you.
My question tonight is to whom it may concern. I have listened to the Prime Minister and I realize that plans have to be in the making before they come to maturity. So now we know what the government is doing, because I came here tonight. My real question is, how will we know when government is doing anything besides passing it on in secret? In other words, I want to know what plans we have for public relations so that the nation can know what government is doing.
Well, first, I have to identify to whom it may concern. But I think I want to call the Minister for information. Senator Gill.
Pleasant good evening. I honestly thought to whom it may concern may concern the Press Secretary. But having said that, along with the Prime Minister's announcement this evening, we do have a revised media approach with regards to disseminating the information from government. As Prime Minister has acknowledged, that has been one of our weaknesses in terms of blowing our, oh, sorry, our own horns, so to speak. So over the next 18 months, one will expect to see, or using all the different media, including the social media, with regards to disseminating information and keeping the public up to date with regards to ongoing projects, especially the key projects that government has identified, and also our policy positions with regards to major issues confronting our people. So one can expect in the months and the next 18 months, thereabouts, a more aggressive media approach. And as well as more, more of our ministers, they have pledged as well to meet with the media as much as possible. Thank you so much.
I'm sorry, here's a question here, then we come to you, sir.
Good evening to everyone. It's mostly a couple of comments rather than questions.
Can you come a little closer to the microphone, please?
Yeah, I think we have developed a sort of attitude in Grenada where we expect government to do everything. And nowadays, even so-called business people are expecting the government to run businesses and make profits for them. I think that if our business people were to take a leaf out of the book of the three-for-10 men, in these hard times, they would be doing themselves and the country a great service. Why are you trying to sell a bear for five dollars when you could sell three for 10, reduce your profit margin, but the volume of sales will go up and eventually you sell more? Yeah, so I think that these guys are setting a trend. They are showing flexibility, they are showing innovation. We have an abundance of avocados on the market these days. But the small business people, rather than drop the price, they prefer to try to sell it at three and five dollars for one and go home with half of it, something perishable. So government cannot think for the people, cannot do everything for the people. Government is there to, to provide guidance and leadership. And although the vendors and the small and medium-sized business people should be sensible enough to recognize what is going on, I still think that if, if there is anything the government can do, it might be to throw out a little advice to people, common sense. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I said three for 10, I was wondering, what was three for 10? No, no, I know what three for 10 is. Question?
Richard, good evening, good evening, Prime Minister, members of the Cabinet. You probably have noticed that I just walked in, but I have been following this from the start via Grenada Broadcasting Network, so thank you for that, I was at work. I took the time this evening to both listen to President Barack Obama on his speech and then, of course, to listen to Prime Minister Tillman Thomas. One of the interesting things that President Obama mentioned was the fact that the American people do not have 14 months to the next election to wait for some relief. I do not believe that we have 24 months to wait for the relief. Mr. Prime Minister, I listened carefully, and in my mind, I'm concerned because we spent, perhaps in your presentation, 60 seconds on the tourism sector. And the most that I got from it is that we have some aggressive plans to market the country, and it will be announced shortly. Now, in my view, I've been hearing that for the last couple of years, and we have a serious crisis in the industry that is affecting the entire economy, and I do not think that we are paying it enough attention. We have the, I can start calling names of hotels that are closed. They have closed wings in hotels. I have closed half the hotel that I manage. And whilst we are talking about a 30% increase in the manufacturing sector, we have sent home 50% of the hotel workers. We have not, in my mind, gone out there to market this country and aggressively go and do it, because we have to face it. We have 100,000 people here, and unless we can get another 100,000 people in and more to start spending, we have no money to circulate. And we have to come up with an aggressive plan, because we know that once there are no visitors on the island, the economy goes down. And the same, in the same vein that Minister Burke was talking about having the projects and people are going to be spending, it's the same thing with the hotel sector. We have a small hotel with 64 rooms that spends $1 million a year in fresh fruit, vegetables, and fish in the local economy, a million dollars a year, but we have no occupancy and we can't do it. And that is where the money is not circulating. So my question is, I know you said that there is an aggressive plan. What are the immediate plans to really get the tourism industry off of its deadbed?
Minister David?
Richard, I thought he asked the Prime Minister. Thank you, thank you, Richard. Yes, I am, I am called upon to answer a very critical question. I'm sorry if I'll be a little bit, not lengthy, but, but have to explain a bit. I absolutely agree with your comment with respect to the need for us to pay more attention to the marketing of Grenada. I think that came up recently, even with Karani issue of using persons like Kirani James to market Grenada. But I think the more fundamental point that you made is the importance of the tourism industry. And I think that is not a problem that will be easily overcome, because I think quite frankly, there's a large amount of the Grenadian population that do not understand the impact that the visitors have on the economy, beating agriculture, beating construction, beating retail industry. I think the fact is, and I mentioned it tonight, with, 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 I want to underline it tonight, that the tourism industry is the most important industry at this time. Granted, I agree with those who would argue that we need to develop the agricultural sector. But I would argue that the way to develop the agricultural sector is to develop the tourism sector and have the agricultural sector feed the tourism sector, as for example, the point you made, if we double our population by 100,000 people every year, or 200,000, or 300,000, or 400,000, by bringing in visitors, it means that there are more mouths to feed, it means that there are more persons to purchase from our agricultural sector. So you're absolutely correct. With respect to marketing, your, your important point, I just want to point out, and I don't want to go into the details tonight, that we have plans to declare the month of October Tourism Month. We are going to restructure the entire tourism board to develop what we call a tourism authority. We are going to, to develop a marketing plan, which is now being developed along with the private sector, and I know your hotel is also involved in that, because I absolutely agree that one of the biggest problems is not only finding money for marketing, but utilizing the money that we have properly, to properly market Grenada. I think the Minister of Finance indicated recently to the sector that we need to develop a lean plan that will utilize the money better. These days, we have Facebook and YouTube and all of that, we have to utilize all of those means. But I agree with you, and over the next couple of weeks, we'll be, as I said, reaching out to the tourism sector. And during the month of October, you will learn much more about what we will be doing. And there are some quite exciting plans that, that you'll become aware of in the next couple of days, to market Grenada utilizing people like Kirani and many other means of marketing Grenada. But one of the things that we have to do that the Prime Minister spoke of is the development of the flagship hotel. That takes time, but we need to develop more rooms, because while I agree with you that we are not bringing enough people to fill the rooms, one of the ways to bring more people is to have a flagship hotel that would cause more people to come to Grenada. So while you make a absolutely critical point, the government, the Ministry of Tourism, the Board of Tourism, we're all looking at it, and in the month of October, you will see us unfold a very detailed and comprehensive strategy for the next couple of years. Thank you.
Thank you, Minister David. Oh, here we go.
Good evening, Mr. Prime Minister, members of Cabinet, gentlemen, Grenadians all. I have two laws, education, agriculture, and this one is for the Minister of Agriculture. Now, we are embarking on a chocolate plant at St. Mark's, and we're going to need chocolate. But I'm seeing people cutting down cocoa lands and building hoses. So I think we need a land use policy that will ensure we don't destroy more of our cocoa lands. So that is my request to you, that we get that policy up and running in the shortest possible time. We've been talking about it long enough, time to stop talk and do. And then we go to education. So it's not a question for you. I've been in education for too long. At Tam C C, we have the mechanical wing there, and we have equipment on the ground that costs a good sum of money. Why is it that the people in charge, I say this, that the academics in charge do not understand the cost of technical education, and they allow technical equipment and materials to go to waste? How could you, Madam Minister, try to get the equipment that are there repaired and covered, so that when we're ready to use them, they're still usable? That's my question. You don't have to answer it now, because I know it's difficult. Thank you.
Well, now I'm in a, in a kind of band. You don't have to answer it, no.
Good evening, public.
Sorry, sorry, sorry. Let's, let's take this question here first. This gentleman's waiting, and then we come to you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I just wanted, and I recognize Honorable Prime Minister and Cabinet members, I just wanted to follow up on the tourism point, because I, I feel that the cruise ship sector, you see, after the season ends, nothing happens, and that really introduces a lot of money into the, into the economy. Could we not, for example...
Could we not, for example, do a special marketing program with the cruise ships? And we may have to drop, I'm not sure, maybe drop our port charges? Maybe they don't have to pay anything at all during that off-season? So, that's a suggestion, right? So that they can come in, come into the country, because they have a special incentive during the off-season. This is my suggestion.
Minister?
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Just briefly, you're correct when you say that the tourism, the cruise sector is important, particularly for the vendors, the taxi drivers, the small shopkeepers, the sites throughout the country, absolutely important. So we have been paying some attention to that, and one of the difficulties we have these days is that many of the cruise ships are moving to Europe. So, and the problem that we face is not a problem particularly of Grenada, it is a problem of the Caribbean, and in particular, the southern Caribbean. One, people, we must recognize that Grenada is among the most southern of the islands. It means, therefore, that when fuel prices increase and the cruise ship companies are faced with the challenge of increase in fuel prices, and they start cutting on the visits, they cut the most southern of the islands. It means that Grenada is one of the early ones to get cut. We have been meeting as tourism ministers in the region, in fact, we have gone to Florida, we've spoken to the industry officials, cruise ship officials, they have given us some ideas on what we can do. One of the things that they've said is that the industry being a demand-driven industry, we must ensure that we improve our sites, our forts, the Anandel Falls, the sites around the country. That is why you hear us talking about the community tourism, places that people can go that makes us unique and different from the other islands. So we are going to do that. With respect to port charges, we have made suggestions, we are discussing that issue, but it is an issue that must be dealt with collectively by the, particularly the eastern Caribbean tourism ministers. So it is an idea, not one that we need to scarf at, but certainly one that needs to be done in a coordinated way. Some of us remember what happened with Carnival, when there was an agreement between the eastern Caribbean countries, and then some governments did their own thing, other governments did their own thing, and it led to a lot of bloodletting on that issue. So, it's one that we have to look at, but we have to look at collectively. But I agree with you, the cruise industry is important, and it's one, in fact, my good friend Minister Qualis just came from Curazao, where we discussed with Curazao, Colombia, Venezuela, Bonner, and Curazao, a cruise itinerary in the southern part of the Caribbean and inclusive of Latin America. We also went to Brazil recently, where we're talking about that. So we are looking at it, but the cruise itinerary is set two years in advance, so it's going to take some time to see results. Thanks.
Thank you, Minister. Ladies and gentlemen, we have...
I just wanted one more thing to say.
Please make it very, very quickly, sir.
Very quickly, the allocation from the Chinese sector for forty million, I want to suggest that part of that allocation go for agro-industries, agro-industries, because I believe we have a good base, but we need to develop the business of agro-industries in Grenada. That's my comment.
Thank you very much, sir. We're going to take you, sir, and then we come back here with that.
Government Minister and the public, my name is Sir Joseph Avlivine. I brought three million pung to Grenada, right? Three million pung.
You have a question, sorry, you have a question.
What I said, I certified two mineral mines for Grenada. One is the garnet, the red diamond, and the other is barium. Barium is every electrical pole you see must have a red pole.
Sorry, do you have a question? Do you have a question?
Yeah, let me hear your question.
Do you have a question?
No. I explained something to the public, okay?
Well, sorry, we want to take your question, we need your question, because we want to ensure that we have a winner.
What I want to say to the government, I registered a mineral mine in World Book of Registration. All mineral mine on earth had to register in the World Book of Registration. And this is barium. Barium we have in Grenada, okay? And if we want to mine barium, the government could also sign up to the World Book of Registration and mine this substance. It's white in hardness, it's white in color, and four in hardness, right? And the atmosphere erode barium, so you put a glaser on it.
Thank you, sir.
You just make it six in hardness, so the atmosphere can erode it.
Thank you very much.
So we could also sell this product to the world and so forth.
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. First of all, I would like to just make a suggestion as regards Kimani James. A lot has been said about him. He's done great, he's put Grenada on top of the world. For the first time in the history of sports, he has reached, made a record that has not yet been touched. We have talked about Kimani. What I want to see...
Karani James.
Karani, Sir James. What I want to see is that because of what he has done, the question of his ambassadorial position that has been suggested, before we do that, we need to ensure, because I've seen it, we've seen it once too often, we have athletes who have made it, but they cannot present themselves. Therefore, we need to have him in to ensure that whatever we do, and he should be our ambassador as was suggested, that he can really present himself, that he present Grenada properly. On top of that, I would like a fund to be set up for Karani James, because tomorrow his education needs to be continued, and therefore we should ensure that that is secured. One, two questions. The question for Minister of Tourism, what exactly are we doing to increase our tourism sites to ensure that when people come here as visitors, they have somewhere to go and see, rather than just walk about aimlessly, even though they have a few dollars to spend? We don't have the attraction for them. We have the forts, we have the St. George's Fort falling apart, where I see visitors trying to climb to go up to take pictures. We need to pay attention to that. Now, on the other side, Prime Minister, Ministers, I would like to amplify, but not here, I thought that I have for the government of Grenada. I have looked over the years, that government continues to spend millions of dollars on this program that we call debushing, but nobody has taken care to look at the damage that is being done by that program. A lady told me to go to hell when I tried to correct her, for she was scraping the little embankment with a rake for fur leaves that were there, taking the dirt with that into the drain, where it will be washed into the sea, where it would cause more deterioration to our reefs, and the very marine life that you're trying to protect will be killed. In nineteen eighty-eight, two experts came here, and I went with them up in Annandale, and they came to advise the government on the question of the protection of the reefs. And the one they were concerned about was the one outside Queen's Park there. As a boy, we walked there, the horses trained there, and a lot of fish was caught there. Today, look at what it is. And the experts pointed out that unless the government does something on the embankment to ensure that the soil is not washed into the river, the reef will be lost, it is now lost, and it will affect Grandan's Beach. My suggestion on the question of the debushing, I would like to meet with the Minister of Finance, the Minister of Works, in order to show the cost, the damage that is being done, and how best, because when we spend these millions, we don't see anything at the end of it. Just simply, you say you give work. I have a suggestion, I said I'd like to meet with you.
So could you call the officers to make an appointment?
Yes, and to make an appointment to ensure that we can use that money to beautify Grenada, and tomorrow we have something, I will protect what we are destroying.
Thank you, thank you very much, sir. Ladies and gentlemen, I recognize two more questions, because we're already down to twenty-five minutes to ten, and we do have some refreshments outside before you leave, so please. I heard that comment.
Thank you. A pleasant good night to everybody here, Honorable Ministers and Prime Minister. I have three points. First, to the Minister of Tourism, I have a passion for tourism, it's an industry I work in, and it hurts me greatly to see that our government is trying their best, and there are persons I notice in the industry that are being paid on a monthly basis to carry out their job to better the industry and are not doing so, and it really hurts me. I therefore would like the Honorable Minister of Tourism, if he can look into that, because it's going to be something whereby, if not looked into afterwards, it would come into something that is going to cause a problem in the future. To my other two points, the representative of my constituency, Honorable Glennis Roberts, I want to say thank you so much on the move you have made, and I congratulate you for that. It is a bold move, and I applaud that step. To the Minister of Education, or maybe Youth Development, I'm not quite sure, I want to ask if you, in the near future, if you can kindly extend the, forgive me, if you can kindly extend the opportunities given to persons who want to further their education, and for what reason fall crack, and they're now much older but still want to get back there. I notice you have some things in the making, or should I say some opportunities for person, but the age limit is quite limited, and I don't believe if you want to be educated, education should have a limit. So could you please open up that gate? Thanks.
Well, I think those are three suggestions, you'd agree, and I think the minister's taken, I'm not even sure which minister now, no, I'm confused. But that certainly is something that will, that age limit issue, I'm not sure, Minister Simmons, on the youth empowerment, if there's an age limit, there is an age limit, so, and that's something you're going to look at. Okay, thank you. Final question.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mr. Prime Minister.
I'm sorry. Okay, I'll take these, I'll take these two questions after this one as the final questions. If not, we'll be here saying final questions all night, do you understand?
Good evening, Mr. Prime Minister, good evening Cabinet Ministers. My first question is directed to Minister of Tourism. Barbados has an all-year tourist season, okay? It's far more advanced than ours. It's my understanding that the visitors, the European visitors especially, they'll fly from Europe, various countries from Europe, and they embark the ships in Barbados. The ships go up the islands, St. Vincent, all the way to St. Martin, sometimes they go west to Curazao, and then come to Grenada. By the time they get to Grenada, many of the tourists, they are tired, they have seen so many, some of them are broke. I heard tourists told me that they are broke by the time they reach to Grenada. Now, we have an international airport, so I'm wondering, if we cannot get, could we get some of the market that Barbados currently has, like having ships embark in Grenada, right? Then the tourists could overnight in some of the hotels, right? And improve the economy. You know, it's a question that I've been, you know, really asking for some time now, and I'm glad I get the opportunity to ask it tonight. My next question is to my guest Senator Alda Gill. As Grenadians, we are all proud of Karani, we, you know, we are related over his recent achievements in the athletic fields and the world stage, but let us not forget that there were many, there have been many of the likes of Karani over the years, over the past decades. Those of us who live in the St. George area, and you know, the suburbs, even in the suburbs, I'm sure we know one guy that come to mind at this time, to come to my mind, he's known as Sobis, or Snowbis, right? He does acrobatic. I knew Snowbis since the time of the Gary regime. Since then, I was asking myself, why don't the government take this young man that is so skillful in this acrobatic, you know, and give him some official training, right? Today, no, this is serious, don't laugh at this, this is serious. Today, we still have, we do still have people, we have young people who have the skills, the creativity in the country, and I'm wondering, how do we go about identifying these people, right, and helping them develop their skills? I'm wondering that, okay? It is a way of providing employment, Karani is employed, and providing, developing our young people is not just providing them employment, but preparing them for employment. Karani is currently employed. So my question is, I guess, like I said to Senator Gill, how do we go about identifying the young people, especially the creative people, people with exceptional skills in this country, and giving them the opportunity to develop these skills and to, you know, for the betterment of Grenada?
Well, I know you, I know you asked a question to Senator Gill, but I think Minister Simmons is in a better position to answer that question. I'm going to start with the tourism question, and go to the Minister of Tourism, and then ask.
Thank you.
Maybe I could answer the question about my good friends Sobis too? But I'll leave that to the minister. He got to take that one, not me. With respect to what we call home porting, the question you raised is the question of home porting. It is something we've looked at, but it's much more difficult than simply landing planes and having them start on the cruise here. It's a, it's a big logistical nightmare that even Barbados is not handling easily. You know, you're talking about landing three seven forty-sevens within a couple of hours of each other, getting the people down to the port, having a kind of port that can move these people on. It is something that we can look at, but certainly something that will take a massive infrastructural investment that we are not prepared for at this time. But it is something worth looking at down the road, but something that we are not at this time adequately prepared for with the port that we have. There's a lot that needs to be done. So, but I just want to, the question that was, the comment that was made earlier by my good friend, what's her name? Ms. Levine, where are you? She, you know, I stand up and take about, this sister is a, you know, they call them vendors, but I call them small businessmen and women, and she's one of the most enthusiastic of the small business women on Grandan's Beach, and I want to pay tribute to all of these small business persons who are involved in the tourism industry, be it the persons in Bathway, Livera, Grandan's Beach, down at Fantasia, and I do agree with you in the comments you made, and I just want to pay tribute to all of the small businessmen and women who in one way or another contribute to the tourism industry. Sometimes we forget them, knowing that they are big business persons, but the small business persons play a major role in our industry. Thank you.
Minister of Youth Empowerment and Sports. Not sure how he's going to answer the Sobis part, but...
Thank you very much, and good evening to all. I still trying to figure out who is Sobis. But, 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 we, at the ministry, at the ministry, we do have a talent identification program, and that is geared mainly towards athletes, and athletes here in the wide spectrum. We're not only talking about track and field athletes, we're talking athletes, football, cricketers, basketball players, track and field athletes, so netball, and baseball too. So we do have a talent identification program where we identify talents, and we identify the best coaches to work along with these talents, and have the best possible playing fields available for the athletes. So we do have a program in that regard, not for cultural artists but for athletes. Thank you.
And I have to say, I heard an interview recently with Mr. Conrad Francis, and I think he said Karani James was a product of that talent identification program as well. I think my glasses are not... Okay, let's take...
Mr. Prime Minister, members of the Cabinet, good evening. My question more or less on address... My question more or less on address is to my good friend Peter David, the Minister of Tourism. I'm not here to defend government. But earlier on, I heard a gentleman spoke that his hotel was almost empty. Government is not responsible for that. Drop your room rates. Because when I see a hotel room in Grenada for nine hundred US a night, I wonder what you have in it. Because I go to other islands, Cuba and other places, and I see much better hotel rooms at twenty-five percent of the cost of rooms in Grenada. Grenada is far south. It costs a hell of a lot to get down here, across thing. What have we been doing over the years? We have been advertising for those people. Those people had disposable incomes, those fat cats businessmen who came, sat on the beach. They had their financial times and other things. And they are not coming anymore because the disposable incomes have dried up. So you are bound to suffer? Don't blame government for that. There was... Oh, by the way, I speak, I was once in the hotel industry. I also have a diploma in tourism from McGill University. Now, a few years ago, we had a consultant who came here by the name of Ali Anapun. Her thing was that Grenada should not get involved in backpackers. You know what we call backpackers? The people who would bring benefit to the people in the market? The people on the side of the street who are selling their things? Because backpackers don't go and sit and pay ten dollars for a Coke or anything like that. They will buy a Coke for four dollars from the waste side vendors. Her thing was that we should get involved in upscale tourism. And that's what they've been doing over the years. Oh, upscale tourism. So now the chickens are coming home to roost. Don't blame government for it. Another thing is, government isn't doing enough to market tourism. I have seen hotels out there actually marketing themselves, you know? They're not waiting on government. But down here, we are waiting on government to do everything for us. A few years ago, there was a small hotel which got... Well, it's no longer there. No problem. No problem used to market throughout the Caribbean. They did not wait on government. Today, down here, we are waiting on governments to do it. You made your bed, line it, drop your prices, be competitive, and we'll have people coming down here. At the same time, we must... Mr. Minister of Tourism, I still say that the people who come down here are doing us a favor, you know? We don't have a hell of a lot to sell. We usually say that Grenada is a preferred destination. But I have traveled... When I look at our waterfalls, unbrothered book, you could blame me out on that. When we go on Niagara Falls and you come down here, it looks like a man standing on a bank with a hose. I wouldn't say the other thing. I was also part of the NAC on ecotourism, right? I really didn't mean a hose. I was part of ecotourism that's gone by the board today. The last government, I had offered to be derogatory, less resuscitate ecotourism and heritage tourism. And up till now, nothing's been done about it. Brother David, I'll be talking to you again on this. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, the minister would like to respond now, and then we take you, sir.
My dear friend, my dear friend, Mr. St. Louis. I beg to very seriously differ with some of your views on how we should approach the tourism industry in Grenada. And let me just spend a minute explaining why. You say that we should go mass tourism, backpackers à la Cancun, à la Barbados, à la Bahamas. You suggest that hotels should drop their rates to accommodate these backpackers. Let me, let me, for a moment, if you would listen for a moment, you will understand my position. Grenada is a very small country. It is all viewing the industry that it is better to get one hundred people who spend a thousand dollars than get a thousand people who spend one hundred dollars. I'll tell you why. The fact is that what we need is not quantity of people coming into the country because that, as other countries have experienced it, can destroy your environment. What you need to do is to develop your tourism industry while at the same time preserving the pristine environment that we have. So rather than have a thousand people who will each drop a plastic bottle in your drains, you have a hundred people who would spend a thousand dollars each and leave that money in the country. See, the object of tourism for us. And if you disagree, you have a right to disagree. You have a right to disagree, so disagree if you wish. But we do not want an industry that will overwhelm our country and our culture. We want a tourism industry that will fit in to our culture and enjoy and leave our culture intact. The experience of some countries where you encourage mass tourism to the extent that it overwhelms your people and your culture leaves you with a country unrecognizable. But we'll have that debate in the month of October. With respect to sites and nowhere to go, I absolutely agree with you, Comrade St. Louis, that we need to develop our sites. The people of St. Patrick's, for example, need to develop that slave pen that you have that is being overrun by Bush. So that you can advertise your slave pen so people can leave St. George's and go to St. Patrick's. The same way they leave St. George's and go turtle watching. So let me disagree a bit. And let me say that with respect to reducing rates, the hoteliers have been reducing rates. Rates have been reduced in the last couple of years. Packages have been offered. But let me tell you, there comes a point where you reduce your rates below that point when your hotel will have to close. Well, there are reduced rates for locals. For those who don't know, there is a thing called the carrycom rate where locals can go, and that exists. So anyway, you know what I like about tonight? Tourism is being treated as important. So for the month of October, I invite, despite our disagreements, I invite everyone to come out in the month of October. Let's talk about tourism, including you, Mr. St. Louis. We'll engage in a much lively debate. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Minister.
Good evening, Honorable Prime Minister and Ministers, everyone all. My question is twofold. One to do with energy and the second one to do with foreign affairs, God willing. The first one is that every industry in any country is affected by the cost of power, especially manufacturing, any large industry, anytime you intend to grow any hotel because of use of ACs and all of these appliances. What is government doing? Now, I know that government is a key shareholder in Grenlech. But what is government doing to help to lower the cost of electricity? Or do they have plans? Because we have heard that Grenlech has plans to put up wind farms and so forth. I've been hearing that for a while, but I'm not hearing anything new as to when they're going to come on stream, if they're going to use government lands, if they're buying their own lands to do it, and so forth, so that the Grenadian people can benefit from cheaper electricity? Because we have to compete against Barbados, against Trinidad, especially with the Gharter manufacturing and so forth. And a person mentioned hotel rooms. It all comes down to a cost of operation, and electricity is a significant part of that. So that's one part. Second part is the foreign affairs part, which, you know, we believe that you do unto others as you would have done unto you. And in the same way that we wished and strove for freedom from the British, so that Sir Eric Matthew Geary is held in honor today for his sacrifices, in the same way, we have an opportunity now to vote before the UN coming up with regard to the state of Palestine and to support a people to the right to their own self-determination. I wish to find out the comments and the thoughts of our leaders that we place our confidence in to ensure that the right thing is done so that each people have a right to their own determination. Under God.
Thank you. Look at the energy, Mr. St. Louis.
Thank you very much. I just want to say that much of what Prime Minister spoke on this evening addressed the question of energy. We have, first of all, we recognize the point that has been made that energy is extremely expensive. In fact, I think it is safe to say that perhaps the single most serious impediment to our development is the cost of energy. And so much work has to be done to reduce the cost of energy, as was pointed out a moment ago. Trinidad, it's costing eight US cents per kilowatt hour to generate electricity. Here, it's costing twenty-five US cents per kilowatt hour. So we really cannot compete at all to produce electricity as compared to Trinidad. And it hurts the manufacturers especially. We have said in previous presentations that we've had that Grenada spends too much money on energy. Our fuel import bill is two and a half times what we spend, what we generate from our export earnings. That is how serious it is. So we must do something about the cost of energy. And that is what we are trying to do. It is fair to say that you've heard quite a bit about energy and so on, but I think the Prime Minister made it quite clear. We are doing something about the generation of wind energy, for example. Through the help of the European Union, we've generated about nine point six million dollars that will be used to generate wind farms in Carriacu. And that was mentioned by Prime Minister. We've said before that we are engaged in exploration work with Grenlech to develop geothermal capacity, which is the most sustainable and reliable form of energy because the base load is constant. You don't have the problem that when wind is not blowing, you have a lower output. Or when the sun is not hot, you have a lower output. With geothermal, it's constant. It's steam. And the result is that, as a result of work done by Grenlech, some geochemical work that they've done, they've determined that they can produce up to ten megawatts of electricity, of electrical power, by 2015. And up to fifty megawatts of electrical power from geothermal by 2020. Grenada's total consumption of electricity at this moment is thirty megawatts. So if we are able to succeed in the collaboration program that is going on with Grenlech, Grenada would be able to supply its entire needs for electrical power from geothermal alone and not have to use any hydrocarbon or fossil fuels for the purposes of generating electricity. That is a very significant development. We are now in discussions with Grenlech. As a matter of fact, we are already... We are working on the draft legislation because we have a new Geothermal Resource Act that we're preparing that will govern the regime for exploring and exploiting for geothermal energy. That has been worked on. The law is in its first draft already. And we are also negotiating with Grenlech at this moment a geothermal resource agreement. We believe that that is something that can change the dynamic as far as energy supply in the country is concerned. In the meanwhile, there are many small independent power producers generating solar energy in Grenada. And a connectivity policy is now being developed with Grenlech to determine for those power producers that are producing excess supply of electricity, how to get it back into the grid, how to sell it to Grenlech at what cost and so on. So government is negotiating with Grenlech at the moment to determine the price, the rates, the circumstances under which that excess generated power will be supplied, will be fed back into the grid, into Grenlech's grid. So a lot of work is going on with respect to renewable energy. And a lot of work is going on with respect to the development of our hydrocarbon potential. I think you perhaps know already that, as the Prime Minister mentioned, we concluded maritime delimitation agreement with Trinidad. We have also, in fact, on Wednesday of next week, we have a meeting planned with the Minister for Energy in Trinidad to talk about some of these developments. And at the same time, we are engaged in some very important, sensitive discussions with respect to the wider hydrocarbon development. So quite a bit of work is going on in the area of energy. Thank you.
Thank you, Minister. I think you'd recognize the absence of Minister Hood, who is not here at the moment. He's out on government business. But I think on the other question, Minister David, former Foreign Minister, will address that. Sorry, Prime Minister will address that.
Thank you. We as a government, we subscribe to the principle of self-determination. And we respect the rights of the Palestinian people to establish their state. People have been speculating. We respect the rights of the Palestinian people, and we have no difficulty with the Palestinian people living in a state where they could live in peace and unity, like we respect the rights of other states to live in peace and unity. So with all the speculation, we have always subscribed to that principle.
Thank you, Prime Minister. I heard part of the discussion, but not the other part. That's why I called someone else to answer that question. Final question this evening.
I must say a pleasant good night to the Prime Minister and Ministers. I do have a question, I have a concern of the ageable people who sell in at the Granans tourism market. During the time when the season, the tourist boat is not in, the people do have no other income than their home. And whenever that they have to go back to go and sell when the tourist season is on, they have to pay for the couple of months that the boat and them is not inside. And these people and them is in seventies, they're in the seventies, close to the eighties. And these are the old, the ageable people who sell in at the Granans market who are like the ministers and look into it and to give them a little ease up with the expense that they have to pay for a month.
I see the minister shaking his head. I wasn't sure.
I simply want to say to Richard that I'll take on board the concern of the gentleman. I'm not sure of all the details, but I'll certainly look into it and see if particularly for the elderly, something can be done.
Ladies and gentlemen, we want to thank you for... I'm wondering if I should take a vote, but I won't take a vote. Your absolutely... Final question. Please make it brief.
I want to congratulate the Prime Minister for outlining what he planned to achieve in the next twenty-four months. Somebody add a footnote to what I was saying. Obama said tonight, we can't wait for fourteen months for election, the things to happen. If you read a paper every day, a week, you see people's homes are up for sale. People come to my office every day and they complain that people have no jobs, no money. So it's good to have those long-term solutions. The country need, the government can't do everything, but you will be the catalyst. We need an immediate injection of money and capital to get people working in this country right now with little jobs. One of the things you could do, and I was suggested, the level of credit, the banks. The banks operate here by license. You know, they have a privilege. They have a social responsibility to contribute to the improvement in this country. Right now, the rate of interest that you get on your savings is reduced. But the rate of borrowing is there, so the margin is increased. You understand? And they think in the short-term level of the profit, in three months, what they have to report back to Trinidad. They told me that, and I know that a lot of bankers. They made it more difficult for people to acquire loans. What is the Minister of Finance doing? Call these people in and make credit a little easier in the society in the short run. You understand? You need that. And I've always said so. Nothing could, you know, you are there, and it's a symbiotic process. process. You'll help people to get jobs. There are people here that have no jobs. They come to me every day, they have things, their people are laying off every day. I went to a friend in a restaurant today, there's nobody buying, there's no money in the economy immediately. So it's good to have these long-term projects, but in the meantime, while the grass is growing, the horse is starving, you understand? Something will be done. Another issue, just a little bit of a footnote in tourism. You know, all countries all over the world, London, Toronto, tourism is the biggest industry for London. Twenty million people go to London there, New York. Aruba used to be a big oil producer, they lost that, and they realized that and make a social transformation. Aruba now have thirty-five thousand rooms, and they made that in the last thirty years, and tourism is the biggest industry. St. Kitts lost sugar, they did that. Do we have to reinvent the wheel? I should have enough models in existence. Don't people in tourism travel, see what other countries do, and can we take and learn from those things and develop that for Grenada? Thank you.
On the issue of the banking, I think, Minister Burke?
On the issue of banking, I agree entirely with what Mr. Bernadine says on what would be desirable. The challenge is that banks are businesses, banks are corporations, they have shareholders, and they decide basically what their policies are going to be as far as lending and so on is concerned. We do not have laws in this country that tells a bank who to lend money to and who not to lend money to. So a lot of what we do with the banks is to engage in what we call moral suasion. We bring in the banks and we have discussions with them about their lending policies, and we have those meetings. The bankers have a bankers' association, we meet with them, we talk with them, we try to cajole them into certain positions. But of course, they take a very tentative stance, I think in part because they themselves in the crisis are experiencing non-performing loans, and they are not eager to lend money at this time because they're worried about people's abilities to pay. So we have a challenge there, and it is, it is, it is a problem which we cannot use a ministerial big stick to solve. We can't force them into, into that position. We have to try and work with them and negotiate. As far as the rates are concerned, I think you know that we have a single currency with the rest, we, we're part of a currency union, part of an area that has a single central bank, and so the rates of savings and lending are by and large are regulated within the union. The Monetary Council will seek, will discuss these matters and try to encourage the banks to act a certain way or to make stipulations in that regard. I recognize what you're saying, I agree with you that we need a stimulus of some kind in the shorter run, but these things are easier said than done. I'm quite sure that if Mr. Obama had the remedy for this, he would have solved this problem in America already. They are still facing nine percent unemployment in spite of the size of that economy, the largest and most powerful economy in the world. They can't put their people back to work. If we are depending on those countries, how are we going to be able to put our people back to work? The fact is that our economies are very closely tied to the United States and the European economies. What happens is whenever these economies are going through hard times, we go through hard times as well. We can find ways to stabilize the situation, we can find ways to increase the amount of grants that we get, we can find ways to obtain concessional lending and try to work on programs. We can find ways to cushion the way that the crisis impacts on people, but we could not simply say, let's find a hundred million dollars and pump it into the economy. Even the people who can print money like America is unable to do it. We can't, we have no ability to print monies in Grenada. So we can't just print dollars as they can do and give it to people and say, go out and spend, yeah? This is a practical and realistic challenge that we face, and I think that what we are trying to do are, is take some measures that will create some short-term employment, cushion the difficulty for the most vulnerable, put in place some medium-term measures that we, we think can work, and put in place a longer-term plan for the five transformational sectors of the economy. We believe that the strategy is the correct one, and we are confident that it will work in the end. We are going through some challenges, but I think that we can ride through it together. As the Prime Minister mentioned, the last three quarters that we've experienced, the last quarter of 2010 and the first two quarters of 2011 have all brought positive economic growth for Grenada. So the signs are that we are experiencing a turnaround. It is slow, but we are experiencing a positive turnaround. So let's continue to hang in there. I'm quite sure that we'll be victorious in the end. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Minister, and I have to say that there'll be a lot of discussion on tourism in October, as was...